Praise the allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Thank you, Bill. Kathy?
Welcome to the public hearing for the 2024 budget. The purpose of this meeting, this is solicit comments from the public relative to the 2024 general fund budget.
Would anyone like to speak on the budget, 2024 budget, Sam?
I have several questions. He's giving me a couple extra minutes now.
Go ahead, Sam.
Right?
Don't burn a couple minutes, ask him for a couple minutes. Come on.
All right. Want to get me over with. First comment I have on the budget, I'm not happy. I know there, I only have a copy of the revenues part of the budget here. I plan to talk about the expenditure side, hopefully, well, there's only one budget hearing, but hopefully I'll be able to speak at the regular meeting about the expenditures if I get a copy of it, maybe the next, the second hearing. But I'm a little perturbed. I was wondering if the mayor or somebody can answer me first of all. Who put this budget together? I have the impression, the distinct impression that this was put together very rapidly and with very little introspection, with very little deep thought about the significance of what's going on here. The main problem I have with it, there are several questions that come up, and I don't even know if you council people have the answers, but I would like to get some. I just want to make it clear that I think this budget is, represents a kind of miscarriage of justice because of the proposed salary increases mainly. I'm grateful that there's no property tax increase or fee increases, but by the same token, as I indicate every time I speak before this august body, there are a lot of people in our city are struggling to make ends meet, including myself, but I'm not crying on anybody's shoulder. I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's right, I don't think it's ethical. No matter what the justification is or rationalization is, Mayor, whether this is in the CBA or whatever, that you propose a $10,000 increase for yourself and a hefty increase for almost, as far as I know, every city employee. So the increases amounted, it was quoted in the paper, about a million dollars, which comes to about, I don't know, $5,000 per employee, something like that. Now, I'm not saying people in, you know, certain people in this room, other people, policemen, firemen, whatever, don't deserve it. They very well might deserve it. You know, they work hard, they put their noses to the grindstone, they work assiduously. There's a good one, Hannah, assiduously. And, you know, they might deserve it. But the question is, can we afford it in these, in these times when, when people are struggling? As I continually advocate for a, I want to see a break on property taxes, a break on these fees. When you first came into office, Mr. Mayor Brown, you wanted the double, the SOAR fee, and only council reached a compromise there and we got it back to $75. So we had to pay an extra $25 that year. I think you owe us by giving us at least somewhat of a break, somewhat, somewhat of, when I say we, I mean the taxpayers in general, a concession on property taxes, make, maybe, you know, for next year, maybe take 1% off for senior citizens, or give us an extra 30 or 60 or 90 days, maybe lower the fees back down. I have specific questions. But anyway, it seems to me, from, from the way this budget, from the line items are detailed, that you used a million and a half dollars, I think it's right here on the revenue section, used a million and a half interfund transfers, American Rescue Plan transfers, a million and a half dollars. Now, first of all, I called a representative, Matt Cartwright, I never was able to speak to him. I spoke to one of his assistants. Now, she wasn't 100% sure, and I felt that was a kind of, I mean, if she's not sure, maybe the congressman himself isn't sure. Maybe you guys know better. I didn't think ARP money was, was allowed to be used to balance a budget. And essentially, is it what it comes down to, to increase the salaries? That's basically what the ARP money is being used for here, right? Because you're, well, plus an extra $500,000. And I don't think, as I said, that that's right in these times when people are struggling. I mean, I wish I could grant myself a $10,000 increase, but I guess that's not going to happen. We have a section here, a couple line items, I hope I have a couple more minutes, and let me just mention quickly, I think there should be, because I'm the only one speaking here, I'm certainly not the only one concerned. I spoke to a lot of people on the campaign trail, they may not be concerned enough to come down here and speak, and this was not a great time to have it. There should be another budget hearing. And I'm glad that there, that there are going to be two riddings before this thing is adopted. My, in short, I hope you do give me a couple extra minutes, because I got a couple important line items to point them out in the regular session, if you don't. But I'm urging council today, especially you, Ms. Gilbert, because I'll tell you, there are a lot of people in your district, I've been around talking to them, are struggling. And this, because the taxes are not lowered, to me, is still an offense, is still a smug way to look at this budget. It's not good enough that the taxes are not, that are not, are an increase, that they stay the same, it's not good enough for me. So I'm hoping that council will reject this budget, I do get an extra two? All right, I'll wind it up, don't worry. Within 30 minutes, I mean, but I'm urging council to reject this budget for now. I'll finish up within two minutes, if that's all right, give me just two.
I'm running a clock.
All right. But I'm urging council to please reject this budget for the sake of fairness and ethics. There are a lot of question marks besides what I did not get into here, that I think deserve an answer, the citizens deserve an answer to this. I don't know if you people can, can basically, can basically answer any of this stuff. There's a section here, and Mr. Makarsky pointed this out to me, I finally got a cut, penalties and interest on delinquent taxes. A million dollars is budgeted for that. Financial administration return and lien tax, what exactly, does that include the actual tax payment itself, or is that just penalties and interest? As it said, if penalties and interest, that seems like a lot of money. Can you count it, seriously count on a million dollars in just penalties and interest? Have you counted on that last year? I mean, essentially, what's, what's going to happen here, I think, is, is the city is going to find itself in the, on the cusp of another fiscal crisis if some of these things don't, on the revenue side of this, don't come through. Obviously, let me ask also the mayor, somebody who knows, why, do we charge the Wyoming Valleys? I thought, I thought that the city pays the WVSA for various things. Certainly, they built, they don't get by, they make sure we get a bill every quarter for the, for the SOAR connection and for the rain tax. Now, there's a section here, second page of revenues, where it says, financial administration, Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority. I don't assume that's just for taking their, for the staff to take the checks here. $277,000 has risen in 2024 to $325,000. Now, I suggest, I propose, if we're, I don't, maybe you could explain this, is that for use of the sanitary lines, that we're billing them for? And then when they repair it, when they repair a sanitary line, I remember Mike explaining this, that the city had to pay them. So what is this bill for, and why hasn't it gone up 50? Can we count on an extra $50,000, Mayor Brown? Because if not, we're going to be, you know, at hock for $50,000 next year. I mean, I'd like to know if Mr. Swets had a lot to do with this, in putting this budget together. He's the finance director, I assume he did. And if that's the case, I don't think he gave a lot of deep thought to this, maybe he had a dartboard or something he used. Because this seems to me a rather cursory preparation of the budget. And I would like some explanation here, there's all sorts of other places, but I guess I'll have to wind it up, Mike was fair enough to give me a couple extra minutes. I just want to ask one more, one more, I just want to point out one more line item, under state grants, financial administration, state aid for pensions. So the city is counting on an increase of $400,000 to be used for the pension fund only, right? From 2,000, $2,056 to $2,240,000. And the pension fund, as I understand it, is in trouble. So are we guaranteed that that $400,000 is going to come through, and to what, what fund does that, I assume that goes directly into the pension fund, right? It's under state grants, but it says state aid for pensions. I mean, there's all kinds of questions here in the health department, but look, I'll wind it up, I know, I guess you can't give me another minute, right?
I gave you three and a half.
You want to go home and eat dinner?
You're good. Now, that's, there's nothing to do with it, Sam, come on, I was fair to you.
You were fair. Do I, do I get another 30 seconds?
I will say this, I will say this, in response to a little of what we said.
Let me just say one more thing, if, if we can't resolve, if we don't get it, and he doesn't like to respond to my comment, which, okay.
He doesn't have to, he doesn't have to.
Yeah, it's a council meeting, not a mayor.
It's a council, right.
Right? That's why Tony George never came.
I'm happy he's here. You recall, Tony George was never here.
But if these things can't be explained, why should you people vote, why should you people at least get some leverage to, to argue this budget out and try to get at the bottom of some of these, these line items?
Some items, if we do, we do, we talk directly to the administration.
There will be, there will be something to that effect?
Well, we do, if we have questions, we'll go to either Charlie or Brian or Mayor, and we ask our questions.
I hope you're on the lines.
As far as who put the, who put the budget together?
Because I didn't finish, I mean, I saw this stuff, but I'll let it go, you know.
Charlie, Charlie and the mayor, along with Brian Swets, this is his first budget. I thought he did a well job, a great job. I don't see anybody to blame here. As far as the SOAR, I could only, pardon?
Yeah, what, how does that come about? I mean.
What come about?
The SOAR, you're just.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say. I believe that payment, that, that's in the, in the budget, if I'm not mistaken, Brian, would be the SOAR maintenance fee that we're paying. It has to go to the sanitary authority for any, any items that the sanitary authority does for the city, hence why you're paying the $50 a year, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken.
Sanitary authority uses?
You said, the billing sanitary authority gives us, what'd you say, 299,000 something?
325,000.
Okay, 325. That would be the SOAR maintenance fee that residents pay for our lines that were repaired by the sanitary authority, that we owe them that money.
Wait, you owe them that?
The money just doesn't go in the mayor's pocket, or in the, in the general fund.
No, I know that.
It goes to pay bills, it goes to pay the sanitary authority for their maintenance on our SOAR lines.
This 300 and some thousand?
Yes.
But it's revenues, Mike.
It's revenue?
Yeah, it's, Mike, it's in the revenue section. It's not expenditures, it's revenue. That's what I understand.
And I don't know that answer.
Why is it in the revenue section if we're paying the sanitary authority? Is it a mistake? I mean, if it's a mistake?
Anybody here?
Sam, we'll answer your question, hang on.
I'm hanging on.
The sanitary authority, under, under part of their legislation, where the, what people call the rain tax, okay, there's a requirement by the sanitary authority to basically assist municipalities, in a very complicated formula, but the gist of it is this, that they will reimburse up to a certain amount of money based on their intake, certain projects that the city undertakes that benefit water infrastructure and sewage. So what that is, is.
They pay.
They, we'll, we'll expend the money for various things that we do around here, as long as they fit the guideline of how we get, we get reimbursed. We're expecting to get approximately $325,000 this year for reimbursement purposes.
You actually billed the WVSA then, for certain projects?
Correct, we put the money out first, and then they reimburse us for projects that we've had performed that assist them in water infrastructure work.
That makes total sense to me as well. You're right, I didn't even think that.
Yeah, it's not an expense, it's a revenue.
Yeah.
And that's 300 and some thousand dollars. You got a comment on that, Mayor?
Mike, can I answer a couple?
Sure, sure, Mayor.
Please. Sam, you say I don't like to answer your questions, it's because just about every council meeting, you ask me the same question, and I give you the same answer all the time, but you don't seem to want.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, but it deserves, maybe it deserves a different.
Sam, please.
But I'm going to, we're going to concentrate on the budget. As far as the raises that are built into the collective bargaining agreement, you can't just stop giving people raises because they're part of a collective bargaining agreement. It's a agreement between the administration, the city, and the four unions. I can't just say, oh, Sam Troy wants me to stop giving you a raise, I can't do that. It's part of the agreements that have been signed by the mayor and the four unions, whether it's my, my contract or the prior mayor's. You can't not give people raises when it's in a contract, that's called a collective bargaining agreement. You mentioned the fact that you're upset that I'm taking a $10,000 raise. Keep in mind one figure, please, $203,400 I have not taken over the first four years as mayor in salary and benefits. $203,400 I could have taken in salary and benefits, I did not take the first four years. So if you're upset that I gave myself a $10,000 raise, I could have taken a lot more than that, Sam, $203,400 I could have taken. I'm saying it several times for you, you understand that, because that's what I have not taken, that is allotted to me as the mayor of the city of Wilkes-Barre. Okay?
A lot of what? What was your last statement, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone else like to respond to Sam? Thank you, Sam. Yeah. Anyone else? No? Mr. Burden, would you like to speak on the budget only, budget?
No, I'm satisfied with the budget.
All right, thank you.
All right.
All right, we'll sit and wait till 5:30 till we start the work session.
Haven't been here in a while, so I don't want to sign yet.
You didn't forget the rules.
Bob, keep prepared. You'll get your budget, yeah, to speak on the budget. Lock stick to the budget, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds good, I think this guy's stopping.
It's called.
Yeah, okay.
Ready? Bob Kalabaski, I'm here to talk about the budget. And I just want to tell you, and I know it's a waste of time actually coming down here, but like to have this at 5 o'clock, I mean, people aren't even home from work. And I know it was advertised, but it's sort of like. It's just, I just think it keeps the public from being able to talk. You know, 5 o'clock, people are coming home from work, how are they going to get down here? And one question I have is, how much is in the budget for healthcare for the city council? I guess, Mike, would you know that, what that figure is?
Yeah, I just looked at it, Bob, I think it's 69, 69,000? Just looked at it, I had it on here earlier. Yeah. City Council Medical Insurance, it would be, you know, 61, 62, 60, yes, just about 62,000.
And there's no way to take that out of the budget, right? That has to go in, into the budget. We have to still provide certain members of council for healthcare.
When you're done.
Okay. Another thing, I was wondering, since the mayor's here and Charlie, is there a way we could put into this budget? I don't know, Mayor, if you heard about what happened with Tom Greco? And what, we had to pay him a $2 million out of court settlement? And what I brought up at the last council meeting was, if we could possibly hire an outside attorney, maybe we could put so much money into this budget to explore what was done to a businessman? And my point was, why don't we go after these gangsters like Tom Layton and Desoy who violated that man's rights? And what I was thinking of doing is, could we possibly put in the budget to hire an outside firm to look at the possibility, the possibility of going after them? And along with going after King's College? Because they were all intertwined, they, I think King's College is getting ready to settle out of court, but can we possibly put that into budget? To look at suing these people who basically violated this man's right, the rights? And they didn't, they didn't do this by accident, they did it deliberately. So I don't know, Charlie or Tim, could you possibly see if we could get an outside law firm in here and sue these people for what the deductible was? I understand it was a couple hundred thousand dollars. And this was done deliberately to hurt that man. Now, he can't talk to me, he can't tell me nothing about what's going on, because there's some kind of gag order. But I was wondering if we could possibly look at going after these people? Somebody has to hold these people accountable. Why should my, me or anyone else in this city have to pay all that money? Because if that deductible was a couple hundred thousand dollars, or whatever, or whatever it was, why should the taxpayers have to pay for what they did deliberately? So I'm wondering, Mayor, and Charlie, and Tim, and members of council, could we somehow put money in the budget to explore going after these people? Because what was done was wrong. When you violate somebody's rights, that's a problem. Like I had my rights violated here several times, and what was done years ago, where the judge said it was outrageous what they did to me, and I warned him. And I mean, I know I'm not the smartest guy, I only have an eighth grade education, I'm not really, like, really sharp. So I'm wondering, if could we possibly do that? And also, is there a way that we could do away with this $69,000 or whatever it is for the healthcare for council? I mean, I guess I have to go along with, some members of council are going to take buyouts. I just hope the new members of council aren't going to be hogs, like, like Beth was taking $30,000 a year for healthcare, and Mr. Marconi, I guess it was like 30,000 or close to 30,000? I mean, I guess a buyout would be good. I mean, but I know he's not going to listen to me, because he's never really do, but I think we should do away with the healthcare for part-time workers. So.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay. Could I get an answer?
Any, any response? Thank you, Bob.
Is there anybody, is there, Mayor, is your part?
Bob, I guess not. Thank you. Anyone else on the budget?
You see, I tried taxpayers to do something, but as you see, I didn't get an answer. So I'll try to get an answer at the next meeting, I guess we're going to go. Mike, are we going to go right into the other meeting now?
Work session.
Okay. And then, when were we going through the?
Right after that. We'll go into the council meeting.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Thank you, Bill. Ms. P.
The council has one item on their agenda, and that's the ordinance of the city of Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, adopting the mayor's proposed 2024 general fund budget. Any questions? Mayor?
There were two items listed on my agenda, I'm removing the first item, which is the sale of the Cary Avenue properties. I'll be resubmitting that at a later date, council, that's okay. The other item is authorizing the proper city officials to sign any and all necessary documents related to the transfer of the following parcel of land to Bernard Healy Jr., where his name designated for $1. It's at Plymouth Avenue in South Wilkes-Barre.
Mayor, Mayor, Tim, could we, can you explain to us and the people here what that is actually about? I understand it, but I thought maybe the residents would like to know what it is about.
Yeah, I can explain it, Mayor, if you want me to. The Heelys bought property from the redevelopment authority back in the late '70s or early '80s to build a house on the parcel. So they built a house, the house was added to the city's tax rolls in its entirety, and it has existed like that until today. The Heelys are getting a little older, and they wish to sell their home, and a buyer did a title search and made the determination that half of the house is actually built on a lot that's owned by the city. So looking back, the only thing that could have possibly happened is, not all of the property that the Heelys were supposed to get from the RA, the redevelopment authority back in the late '70s, was transferred before they built the house. So the RA continued to own that parcel from the late '70s up until 2015. The city became the owner in 2015, when we foreclosed on about 15 or 20 RA properties, and then took title to those properties. So currently, we've owned it since 2015. But like I said earlier, there was no financial benefit to the Heelys, they were taxed in full, as if the whole lot was owned by them. So this is merely like a clerical error that happened decades ago, that needs to be cleaned up, so the Heelys can go forward with the sale of their property.
Thank you, Tim. And I believe all council can understand that, right? We all understand that, right? Okay. Council presentations. Councilman Brooks, anything today?
No, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Marconi?
I just, just real quick, Charlie, I had a couple people who chatted to me about Washington Street again. So we all know that it was just paved probably within the last six months. I know I spoke about the pave cut at our last meeting. There were a couple more pave cuts, I believe it was today, yesterday, and today. And whoever, whatever company did that, I got to tell you, they did a great job. I just want to, just want to tell you that. I don't know what company it is, but if you can do some research and have them do it in the whole city, I think we'd be in great shape. The one, though, there was a water main break that we, you know, we just couldn't control that, and things happen. It's in front of, it's in front of the Goodyear building. That's still in rough shape, we need to revisit that, if you can put that on the list, and have me take a look at that, please.
We just, John, we just had a meeting today. Ooh, that's not working. There we go. We just had a meeting today, the administration and the water company, and that's scheduled to be replaced. The problem was, there was a box by a valve, and someone hit it, and it, they had to dig it up in order to put a new box in, and that's why they had to dig it up. It's already scheduled for replacement, should be by the end of the month.
Are you referring to?
The one in front of Goodyear. Yeah, and the other one is also, we talked about the whole stretch along there. Okay?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yeah, just one thing, South Hancock Street between North Hampton, I think it's, it's either Rose or Amberlyne, I don't know why I can't think of it right now. A utility company was working on that block for a while, and I don't know if it stopped recently, but the road's still rough, so I'm not sure if they had planned on repaving it before the winter, or.
Yeah, that was also, we had that discussion today.
The bane of existence, yeah.
Well, yeah, so, yeah, they have that, that's on their list.
Okay, perfect, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Barrett, please.
No, just one thing just came up, and I want to thank the administration and all the workers that go out and respond to our concerns in a very, very timely manner. This one just came up, this is Monday Street, near Maxwell, a little bit rough there, and I know that eventually it's probably going to have to be repaved, but if we could just do something with it in the meantime, the residents would much appreciate it. That's a narrow street there, and it's kind of hard to miss some of the routes there. That's all, thank you, sir.
Myself, I just want to commend many people, starting at the mayor and the administration. I was at, myself and Councilman Brooks, were at a pickleball park ribbon cutting in Barney Farms Park. It's really, was really interesting due to the fact that mayor recognized the talent in our DPW. And these guys, really, you have to go down and see it, it's really nice. They did a great job, and it was all done, DPW saving the taxpayer money, hundreds of thousands. New sidewalks, red, did the courts, they're beautiful. And the nice thing too, that would happen, that the mayor, mayor said, is there was no council member standing there for a ribbon cutting, and old mayor cutting a ribbon, it was the DPW guys, two DPW guys held the ribbon, and one DPW guy cut the ribbon, and you were there, Hannah. It was so nice. And you really, really need to go down there and enjoy it. Again, I thank the mayor and DPW. The talent those guys have is unbelievable. I knew a couple of the guys, two of the three guys that were there of the ribbon cutting group, and I know, I know the one guy, actually two guys, that are very talented, and I thanked them, and Dave Lewis as well.
Did you play one?
No, I will, I'll challenge you.
All right.
Okay, we'll be starting the council meeting shortly. Not that I win.
And to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Thank you, Bill. Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Marconi?
Here.
Ms. Gilbert?
Present.
Mr. Barrett?
Here.
Mr. Belishko?
Here.
Also in attendance is Mayor George Brown, City Attorney Tim Henry, Administrator Charlie McCormick, Finance Officer Brian Swets. Also in attendance is Mayor George Brown, City Attorney Tim Henry, Administrator Charlie McCormick, Finance Officer Brian Swetts, Assistant City Clerk Tracy Smith, and Administrative Assistant Lisa Sanfico. Good evening. Welcome to tonight's regular session of council. Please turn off all cell phones. Following our examples of some important rules, they are not intended to be a complete list. Please adhere as closely as possible to the five-minute speaker presentation time limit. No persons are allowed to address the council from beyond the rail except the speaker at the dais who has the floor. The chairperson shall preserve order and decorum and prevent attacks on personalities. Chairperson shall determine all points of order. No person except city officers or their representatives shall be permitted within the rail during any meeting without the express permission of council. Council kindly asks that the public please vacate the building within 10 minutes after the meeting adjourns. And finally, when members of the administration are speaking, please stand up and speak into the microphone.
Would anybody like to speak on pending legislation? Sam?
I'll further elaborate on the budget and my questions and objections to it. I don't know. It befuddles me how you five, I mean, you're all to a certain extent conscientious people. But I don't know how you could vote for something. Now, you said usually the process, correct me if I'm wrong, but the budget process until, I don't know how it's written in the charter, Tim. But shouldn't there be, the purpose of a budget here is to get advice and consent from the taxpayers to a certain extent, isn't it? I guess, but just like all other comments that taxpayers make, it's largely ignored. I don't know how you could vote on something if you're not familiar with certain line items, with certain specifics of the budget. Maybe you guys can explain. I still haven't gotten an explanation of the issue I raised before. Penalties and interest on delinquent taxes, a million dollars. Does that include the taxes themselves or just the penalties and the interest? Because a million dollars is a hell of a lot of money. These specific line items have to be resolved, I think, before you can vote on this. The first reading is tonight, so you're going to vote on it, right? I don't know how you could vote on something if you're not 100% familiar with the, with the way, with what these, with the specifics of these line items. I can go on and on here, but of course my time is limited. Mercantile business tax, there's an anticipation of a $100,000 increase in that. The mayor claims, I don't know if it was the mayor, but somebody claimed that there's, what's the basis for that increase in the mercantile tax? The rate did not go up, hasn't gotten up since its inception, which was 1995 or something. I know the rate didn't go up. So we're anticipating more businesses paying it? I don't know if you people are aware, but there's a lot of K O Z's out there, right, Tony? I know what I say isn't too relevant, but maybe you can give me an ear, you know? There are a lot of K O Z's out there who don't pay taxes. So where do you think this $100,000 is going to come from? New businesses? Are there new businesses line up to come in here and pay this 100,000? Can you show me, you know, justification for that? I'd like to see it. I, there's a recycling performance grant, Financial Administration Recycling Performance Grant. May I humbly propose this $80,000? Mayor, I know you've, is he here? Oh, I know, Mayor, you haven't lost your empathy totally, but maybe you could get some of it back. I think some of that $80,000, where does that go? Does that go, that state grant go into the general budget? Does it go into paying for, I know recycling costs money. But I would like to propose that maybe a small, small percentage of that money go into a fund to help people pay the outrageous recycling fees that we pay every year, which used to, there used to be no recycling fee. $80,000 is a lot of money. I'm still a little bit very skeptical on the explanation I got from Mr. McCormick on the, when we felt a sanitary authority. This, as I understand it, what you explained is a state mandate that some of the rent tax money goes back to the city? And you're anticipating an increase of $50,000? I propose humbly, before you pass this budget, that some of that, first of all, I'd like to see a justification of that. Did the state mandate an increase in the, in the return of the money, Charlie, or what? The $50,000 increase is quite a bit. If that's the case, why can't some of this money be put into a trust fund or something to lower people's rent tax and sanitary? It's already outrageous. Every, what is it? I pay about, I don't know, $70 a quarter? And a lot of people pay more. I'm in the basic, what do they call that? The basic category for the runoff. There's a, there's a whole list of items here for the Health Department that I would call into question. Is this, can somebody explain? Maybe you, one of you five can explain. State grants, categorical, public health administration, a long list. We got, we got a bunch of money here, $185,000 for AIDS prevention. I didn't know AIDS still existed in the country, does it? There's still AIDS going around? I haven't heard anything. But 185, I assume that's for salaries and it's for programs, both? $185,000 for AIDS prevention. I simply propose to you that for a large, to a large extent, this Health Department is a waste of taxpayers' money. For what it does, they do, there are some, some good things about it, a few good things about it. They come around, check properties and all that are questionable in terms of their sanitation, in terms of their, the health aspect of them. But there's a list of things here that I would have to call into question. How can you people vote on this? Childhood lead grant, $16,000. Safety and health communities. I'd like to see an example of these, these programs, if they're, how they're initiated. If I call about this tomorrow to the Health Department, are you going to explain if I want some AIDS prevention advice? Okay, I know my time's up. Hope I don't have a heart attack, then my time will really be up, right?
Now, as far as, as far as your sanitary bill, your rent tax, did you?
Yeah.
It's $14.90. That's what you're paying every quarter, quarter.
Plus the sanitary, sanitary hookup?
Yes, $14.90 is what you pay. You're a little carey.
Yeah, well, that's still a lot of money, Mike. That's a lot of money for, for people.
$14.90 a quarter.
But you're getting money back. Is it, am I correct now? Is the explanation clear? You're, you, the city gets money back?
I mistook you earlier, yeah.
Huh?
I mistook you earlier when you said about the, I, I thought it was an expense and here it's revenue. And Charlie had explained that.
That go into the general fund, that 325? It's not right.
Councilman, anyone? Anyone else speaking on pending legislation?
Mike, I could talk about the budget again, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to tell you, I think that's really nice that the public works, saved us what, hundreds of thousands? And something I just brought up is let's do away with that health care for the next four years and that's almost a quarter million dollars. So why don't we get, why don't we do, do that? Get rid of that. I really think, because that's, that's money. And I was wondering, will anybody answer me about this? Could we possibly go after? And if we can, we can make this, these people pay us back the deductible, I don't know if it's $200,000 or $300,000. I didn't really get an answer yet. Why can't we go after them? I mean, the government, when the government goes after somebody, they, they make them pay whatever they did wrong. Is there a way that we could do that? And so far I haven't got an answer. You know, and I think it was just, it just tickles me that you say how they saved us this money. But yet, when the mayor saved us money by taking a reduction in his salary the first year or two or three he was here. But yet then you people absorbed it all with $30,000 here for Beth, $30,000 for John, whatever you got, 15, 20? Then we gave Kathy the $20,000 raise?
It wasn't a raise, Kathy. It's not a raise.
Well, yeah, I know, but you.
No, it's not a raise. Let's put it that way. I'm done with that.
Okay, it wasn't a race, but her position, you could have said to.
She took a new position.
Right.
If she did, this city would be in deep trouble.
Right. Well, what happens if she disappears? You mean?
If she disappears, we're screwed.
You're kidding me? Well, I'll tell you what, I want, I want, I want Secret Service protection for her. But the thing is, when you, when you did do that, you could have said Kathy, take it at this salary. And I'm sure she would have took it. There's some, so what happens if something happens to her? You mean the city, it's the end of the city?
Tracy's just about educated on it, but I don't want to go back to it. But go ahead.
Oh, okay. So other words, if Kathy.
I don't want to take any of your time.
All right, so other words, we do have a backup of something, she gets kidnapped or something? And she doesn't come back. But I'm wondering, is there any possibility that you could do away with this, all this money for this health care for this, this coming year? And I, it's just ridiculous. And also I think with our new council members, I just hope they don't get corrupted and take $30,000 a year like Beth did, $30,000 like John did. And whatever you're, I don't know how many, you're 15 or whatever that you took. It's just, you know, you know it's wrong. Everybody knows it's wrong, but yet everybody keeps doing it. The thing is, you come down here, this is really, this really is a waste of time coming down here. It's a waste. Because you're just going to, it doesn't, doesn't matter what the taxpayers have to pay. You'll just take it. Like, Mike, you know, you're very, the most successful businessman in South Wokesbury, well, you're auto emporium. You know you don't need the taxpayers to pay your, your health care, but yeah, you're going to take it. You're going to take it. I mean, we had how many fees over the years, raised up fees and license things and everything you could possibly raise up was raised up. But yet you people gotta take it. You gotta take it and you know you don't need it. No, and Beth, she didn't, she didn't need it, but she took it. And John, you took it. You're like a bunch of hogs. It's, it's wrong. On one hand, we're saying, oh, they saved us, Public Works, oh, Lord, Public Works saved us the money. But yet here we have a chance, you could, you do away with this health care stuff over the next four years. It's a quarter million dollars and if anybody else tries to get on it, it's going to cost us more. So I'm wondering, any possibility that we could do away with this health care? And also Mayor, you and Charlie, Charlie, listening? I was wondering, is there a way that maybe we could get together to see about hiring, getting an outside law firm to go after these people that deliberately violated a man's rights? That cost the taxpayers of this city a couple hundred thousand dollars from what I'm told? That we had to take out of the general fund? We need, we need to make somebody pay. That's just it, these people, they got their big fat pensions? And that's another thing I was wondering, is there a way we could have, I guess with Mr. Controller, Mr. Tony Thomas, maybe he could help us look into how do you count this part-time service towards a full-time pension? And when I brought it down, and I think, I think it's like all them people that did it cost us so, two and a half, $3 million already? If this was the mafia, I wouldn't want to be around when you people started cars. This is, it's really, the thing that's a shame is, is I know I get out of hand sometimes. I just get, just get so frustrated. But the sad thing is, is I'm right. There's nobody working part-time in this city or any other city that should be able to get full-time health care and then work part-time and then turn it around and go towards a full-time, towards a full-time pension. It's ridiculous. Belishko Enterprises couldn't afford it. I couldn't afford it. Neither could the Henry Enterprises or the Marconi Enterprises or the historian Tony Brooks's estate. He couldn't afford it.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, could I get an answer?
Anyone else on pending legislation?
Hold on, I just want to.
No, 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 hold on, no, hold on.
Hold on.
You're all, you're done? Anybody else have anything to say to him? No, thank you. Anyone else on pending legislation?
You know, you're a very, very mean man. You violated my rights. You're a very mean man. I am going to sue you and I am going to teach you a lesson.
Anyone else on pending legislation?
And I hope it comes out of your own pocket. You are a very mean man.
I am a mean man.
You're right, you're a very mean man. If this was private business, you'd be thrown out of here.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Nobody wants to see taxpayers. Nobody will answer. We have a chance to go after these gangsters.
Kathy, please proceed.
Now we have, take a vote on the resolution.
Excuse me. Kathy, I'm sorry.
It's okay. On the agenda, as the mayor said, the first item has been pulled, so we'll be voting on the second resolution, which is authorizing the proper city officials to sign any and all necessary documents related to the transfer of a parcel of land on Plymouth Ave. We need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Gilbert. Second by Mr. Brooks. Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
And then we need a vote on the minutes. Need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Belishko.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marconi. Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
And finally, we have file of council number four, 2023, an ordinance of the city of Wokesbury, Pennsylvania, adopting the mayor's proposed 2024 general fund budget for first reading. Motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Belishko. Second by Mr. Brooks.
3025, I can't understand.
Sam, please.
Reporting on the budget now?
Yes.
It's over.
Motion by Mr. Belishko, second by Mr. Brooks. Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
Council presentations. Councilman Brooks, do you have anything more since you had nothing last time?
Use your phone, this isn't working. And somebody uses speed.
I'm gonna have to hold it up so you know. Okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Marconi? Ms. Gilbert?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Barrett, please.
Just a short comment, Mr. Chairman. I know there's discussion about the budget, specifically the revenues, the anticipated revenues. And I know just from our experience that these numbers that are in here were not numbers that were just pulled out of the sky. They're based on empirical data, research and more importantly, past budget numbers that have been realistic. I have faith in this budget. I have great faith in our administration and our finance team for putting this together. I know if you're not familiar with some of the titles you read, they may be misleading. We talked about AIDS and a few other things. But, but these are all numbers that have been proven in the past. The administration, they talked about delinquent taxes. I know that we, the city, has ramped up their approach in dealing with delinquent taxes. So again, I just believe that these numbers are realistic. I have faith in them. Now, certainly things can happen and they do happen as we know. And that can affect that. But I think that these numbers are based on the best information available at this particular time, so I'm very comfortable with it. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, thank, I'd like to thank the administration. Brian Swetts, a new guy in the city and he's doing a heck of a job.
Yes, sir.
And I want to apologize to the public and to my council and to the administration for getting a little bit hot, but it is that way. I get that way now and again. Oh, yeah. See, I rattled. Public presentation, Sam, Sam Troy, please.
Sam Troy. In case you don't know me. I'm a little perturbed. I guess I'm a lot perturbed at that way. Look, I don't, I don't hold it against anybody specifically and I'm, I guess I'm out here finally a lonely battle. There's a gentleman sitting in this room who's gonna, if I'm not mistaken, you're gonna be on council, is that right?
Yes.
I have a, just a disturbing feeling that the business as usual approach by this council is going to continue with the new faces on council. Nothing is going to change. I still don't understand and I, I don't, Mr. Barrett, I'm glad you responded to that to some extent. I don't know how, it seems to me that it's a kind of blind faith that you have. Don't forget, am I correct in assuming that Mr. Swetts had some input in putting this budget together? He's, he's the finance director, right? Getting a cool $98,000. He just got a raise too with this new budget, right? He started at $98,000 a month ago and he got what, $2,500 or $3,000 raise? That's pretty good for only being an officer and working a month. Right, Mayor? He's making more than you. What's the justification for that? It's a little perturbing, disturbing. There are so many questions. I'm just looking on the revenue side of the budget. I even got an expenditure, I'll have to get that for the next reading, I guess. But there's a lot here. Do you guys know about a paved cut ordinance for utilities? Do these utilities, you guys all pay utilities, right? Electric, gas, water, right? Sewer, cable, whatever. A paved cut ordinance in my mind, I'm looking under other taxes in the revenue section. $300,000 is allotted last year and 300, I don't know if we got that, if the city got that much, anticipating $300,000 next year. Now that's, I guess, a fee that is, it's not a tax, is it? It's listed as a tax, Mr. McCormick. Is that a tax that the city establishes, that, that allot that it gets from the utilities? If that is the case, I propose increasing that tax on these utilities. Is that like for the water company that ties up our streets for God knows how long? For this, this city, this street right in front of here, the infrastructure problem is getting out of hand, Mr. McCormick. I know you feel powerless, the mayor is evidently powerless, council is powerless. But let's, let's do something about it, right? Let's, I mean, I guess this is a fee for whenever they dig up the pavement, that's the way I take it. Maybe you guys can explain it, you five. Is that right, Mr. Brooks?